Mr. Chairman.
Okay, welcome back, everybody in the audience and those on YouTube. We're in the afternoon session of July 22nd. Our next agenda item is not an action, or it is an action item. This is a tax deed. I'm not going to say sale. It's more of a tax.
It's a hearing, tax deed hearing.
Hearing.
Yes.
So this time I'm going to turn it over to our esteemed treasurer and we'll go from there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm here today to talk to you about the one tax deed property that we have left on our list. And for the benefit of anyone listening or anybody coming back to watch this, I thought I'd go through the steps that we take in the tax deed process and what the whole thing is about. Because there seems to be some misinformation out there about this. And so I just wanted to do a little education. The tax deed process happens when an individual becomes three years delinquent on their property taxes. So it does take three years of delinquency, which would include six notices from my office to the property owner that they have taxes that are due and payable. Starting on January 1st of the year, once the taxes become three years delinquent. So January 1st of 2024, we started the tax deed process on the 2020 taxes. At the beginning of this year, there were 72 properties in danger of going into tax deed at that time. And today, we are down to just one property left. So my office spends, spent the last seven months going through a step-by-step process to try to contact individuals, figure out if they needed assistance in paying their property taxes, set up payment plans, communicate to them the importance of getting caught up and whatnot. So the first thing that we did is we sent out a reminder letter. And this happens in the first two weeks of January. And essentially, it's just a letter detailing that, hey, you're three years delinquent on your property taxes, and there's going to be a lot of fees incurred if you do not get these paid. And we give them a pay-by date. And this year, it was February 20th. So if you do not have your property paid by February 20th, you're going to start to incur more fees than just the penalties and interest that are normal for past due property taxes. Then on February 20th, most, many of the individuals paid at that point in time. I believe we got it down to 36 people left on the list by February 20th. Then we send the list of those properties to a title company. And we ask them to do what's called a litigation guaranteed title search on the property. And that provides us with additional information. Are there other lien holders? Are there secondary owners? What other, you know, things? What other information can you provide to us so that we can help potentially collect these taxes? Those reports take about six weeks to come back to us. And so at that point in time, we send out a certified mailing letter. And we send it to everybody who's come back on the litigation guarantee title search. So if there are other lien holders, if there's other owners, we notify them. And we, that report also provides to us other potential mailing addresses for individuals. Say they haven't updated their address in our system. It could provide some clarity on where to send mail to. So on April 17th, we sent out certified letters to everybody who came back on the, on the litigation guarantee title search. And then as required by Idaho state law, that letter that we send in the certified mail, it's called a notice of pending tax deed. And that is the first step that's required by Idaho state law for this tax deed process. The second step that's required is that we advertise in a, in a public place that we have properties that are delinquent in taxes. So we choose to advertise in the Star News newspaper. And we have to advertise four consecutive weeks. And that time period has to be no more than two months prior to tax deed and no less than 14 days prior to tax deed. So we give people an extended amount of time. We started advertising on May 23rd, which is just right after, two months prior to the tax deed hearing. That way, we give them more time to see the notice and get a payment in. At that point in time, the, the properties tend to drop off pretty quickly. I believe we were down to about nine by the end of the advertisement period. And then after that, my office really goes into like, try to play detective. And we do the best job that we can do to try to get ahold of folks. We look up phone numbers, we use Google searches. This is not required by law, but it's a personal goal of mine to help ensure that people don't lose their property to, due to not paying taxes. So we do the best we can to try to contact folks. And then not more than five days and not more than, or, excuse me, not, less than five days and not more than two months prior to the tax deed, we record a document called the affidavit of compliance. And this was actually included in your packet for this meeting. And this shows that we've met all of our legal requirements in following Idaho state code to conduct the tax deed hearing today. So the two things that I talked about that are required by Idaho state code are the certified letter of the notice of pending issued tax deed, and then the publication in the newspaper. So you can see that I've included both of those documents and all the addresses that we sent the notice of pending issued tax deed letter to.
So Joanna, if that individual walked in today and said, I want to pay my taxes, is it too late?
They had until 1:00 today. And honestly, if they were to come in right now, I would take the payment. We get to, there's a few more steps on the list here. And the only way that they could make a payment today is if it worked in cash or certified funds. Because of, you know, a potential NSF on a check or a chargeback on a credit card, we only accept those payments for the last 10 days. So then about one, one to two weeks prior to the actual tax deed hearing, I asked the sheriff's office to go and physically post the property. So if there's an individual living in the home, we get a red piece of paper and laminate it and say, hey, you have until this day to come in and pay the taxes. So in my opinion, my office has not only followed Idaho state code, but gone above and beyond to try to contact individuals, get them informed of the situation that their taxes are in, and hopefully allow them enough time to make tax payments.
So just from my information, so like those 36 people that waited till 11th hour, all they do is they just pay latest year?
The oldest year, correct. If they pay the oldest year, it removes them from the tax deed process and they are not included in the hearing today. So many of those individuals still have 21, 22, and 23 delinquent taxes. Some of them, you know, maybe they had a wrong mailing address and it just slipped their mind that they were supposed to pay their property taxes. Those individuals paid up till current and then they don't have to worry about it. But there are some that are still delinquent.
Question, Joanna, before you go on, I see you also sent one to the IRS. Is that protocol now?
That is because that individual had a lien that included the IRS.
Oh, gosh. Thank you.
Yep. So sheriffs were able to post the property on July 10th for these individual cases. The la, the remaining properties paid off at that point in time. We only had four that were posted this year. Three of them paid. We do have one property today that has not paid and do need to proceed with the tax deed. Which, at the hearing today, what happens is the, we take the property from the property owner and put it into Valley County's name. And we will discuss scheduling a tax deed sale, which, at which point you would auction off the property to the highest bidder. I would recommend that we schedule that for September 16th. It's a Monday in September. It's typically about 60 days after the tax deed hearing. Between now and then, I continue doing my due diligence to try to get ahold of individuals, to talk to them about the situation. After the tax deed has happened, the individual will have to pay all of the delinquent year's taxes, the current year's taxes, and an estimate of next year's taxes to be able to redeem the property.
Can we do the sale in here?
Yep.
Something new for me.
Yeah.
Remember last year, weren't you?
Mm-hmm.
So.
That's right. We did that little.
So Joanna, the second person came in and paid.
Correct. Yep, we did have, as of this morning, we had two tax deed properties, but one of them did pay off today. So we are down to just one tax deed property. So a little bit of details about the property that we are discussing today. Let me get this pulled up so I can take a look at it. Property is owned by Kimber Falcons. It's addressed at 417 Floyd Street in McCall, parcel number RPM 0000160982. The total amount of delinquent taxes is, you know what? I don't actually have that right now. So this statement was printed before the most recent fees were put on. A total amount of $6,527.90. Like I said, there are a few more fees on there that I did not grab. But I will have an updated amount once we get to the tax deed sale. This individual was sent two certified letters. They did receive one of them. There was no signature on, on the certified receipt, so I wasn't able to identify if it was properly delivered or not. The other certified mailing was returned back to us. We were able to find a phone number that looked like it could have been this individual's, where we called and left a voicemail but didn't hear back. I was not able to find any next of kin or anything like that. So we've done the best that we can do with the limited resources for investigation that we have. So sad.
So this is for about .35 of an acre, just bare land. There's no improvements, correct?
There is a home on the property.
There is an improvement, yeah.
And like I said, the sheriff did post that home. So if there is a resident living there, it would have seen posting.
And Kimber lost, is that one? In there?
Floyd Street.
It's on Floyd Street. So it's right across from like, the cottages, the McCall nursing home. Right across the street from there.
So our motion today then is to make motion to, I don't want to say the word, take, take ownership?
Yeah, so what I have here is it's the tax deed and it's kind of worded like a resolution. Maybe I'll, I'll read this for you. But it essentially is notification to you that as the treasurer, I am taking the title of the property and putting it into Valley County's name. And actually, Idaho state code essentially says that once I've taken it, I've granted it to you as the commissioners, and it's your responsibility from this point on. The way that we traditionally handle it is that the treasurer still kind of manages the process and schedules the tax deed sale and whatnot, whereas you conduct the sale. But my office still manages communication and research and investigation.
And since this is different and that this is a home, do we have responsibilities now for keeping the yard up until it's sold? For, I mean, you know, how do we manage the maintenance of this?
Right, that is, has been a question that's been thrown around at the treasurer's conference in the last few years. Typically, if you have a home that has a resident in it, then you loop in the prosecutor's office and figure out what we are legally required to do. I do not know if there is a resident living in this home.
I will drive by it today, my way home.
The mailing address.
They can have a renter in there.
Right, the mailing address for the individual who owns the home is in Boise. We did, like I said, we posted the home with an actual notice. And the notice has our phone number and email address and office location address on it. And we have not heard anything.
Crazy.
Yep. Yeah, it's a very unfortunate process. And like I said, my goal every year is to get this to zero. And unfortunately, this year, there's still one on the list.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
So our motion then is to accept this tax deed parcel? I'm not looking for words here.
Yeah, I would say that is accurate.
So then I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we accept for tax deed auction parcel number RPM 00000160982. I guess, I don't think we need anything else, do you?
I don't think so.
I don't think so, okay. So we got a motion and a second to take claim of this parcel for tax deed auction. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
What's your recommendation? Do we loop Brian in now to see what our responsibilities are? Or what's the step, next step?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll let the prosecutor's office know that we've taken this property. I'll see if they have any resources to be able to help us look for this individual, to get ahold of them. Like I said, they did receive one of the certified letters that was sent. So in my mind, they've been notified and they're aware of the situation. Plus, the property has been physically posted. I, I don't know.
All right, it's an interesting question too, as far as if there is a renter in there, now they're paying somebody that does not own the property.
Correct.
So, yeah, interesting, interesting dilemma.
That's a tough deal. Big green.
Yeah. I would be happy to run by the property, maybe see if a sheriff's deputy would accompany me over and see.
Yeah, take somebody with you on that.
Oh, I always drive by. Yeah.
Chicken, there's no way I'd get out.
Put yourself in a bad spot.
Yeah. I think that that, that would be a responsible thing to do if it looks like the home is occupied.
That's so sad. $6,000 worth of taxes. Place has got to be worth a couple.
Yeah, it's, it's not a new, it's not a new home by any means, but it's, I mean, it's in McCall.
Great location.
Exactly.
So I know, I know years back, we had a situation like this and the owner had passed away and we could not find, we didn't know that. Have you done like a search for?
I do search obituaries as well. This individual looks to be still living.
I know the name for some reason, I don't know what.
Yeah.
Well, well, I think it's appropriate action. I mean, you got to pay your taxes.
You do have to pay your taxes. And I feel like there's a, Idaho code gives the minimum requirements for what, what needs to happen to make sure that we are seeking out these individuals. And I feel that we go above and beyond to the maximum without endangering myself or my staff. And it's just very unfortunate when we get to this point.
Yeah, we think you've done a great job.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Yep, perfect. Okay, hello, Pat.
Hello.
So do you, is anybody else coming on your side? Do you want to wait or can we go ahead with this next one?
You can go ahead if you'd like.
Okay, we're going to move on down to our agenda. This is an action item. This is approved the final business continuity plan. Pat, good to see you back.
Yeah, good to see you.
I know we made a few adjustments last time we talked and I guess you got those in there.
I did, I finalized it. Got it all ready to go and you should have a copy of it.
Yeah, I am looking at it now.
Pat, you know me well. I found a few typos you need to fix.
Okay. And I can't tell you how many times I looked through that.
I know, that's.
Where's this one at? This is in your packet that Abby sent you.
Template, that'd be what it's underneath of?
No, it should just be 24 business co, C O O P. Continuity of Operations Plan.
Code of Compliance, no. CP, no. Big, with Daki Sangas, GNA, Dennis Scott, Newy.
There you are.
Yeah.
So I did want to acknowledge the people that were on the committee. Sherry helped issues here for one, Elle helped us for the rest. But it was also Mike Savoy, Scott Klingon, Jeremy Wilcox, Jeremy Mitchell, and Mike LaCroix were all on the committee as we moved forward and created this plan. And really, the purpose of the plan is to make sure that we have a continuity of operation should one of our buildings go down. So let's say the ELC goes down, what would we do with the dispatch? Did you, you found it?
Very top right on the blue bar. Just use your down arrow or.
So with that, what questions?
That was great. I think that, I was going to send you the changes so you can take a look at it.
So this is the co-op, I was reading that last night.
Yeah.
So do you need on the committee, a commissioner? I mean, it was, let me get back to where it is. Response team.
In the appendix.
Now, the crisis management team, there is not a commissioner on that crisis management team? So I don't know if you even need it?
No, the commissioners, ah, got this all messed up, but that's all right. So the response team does have the chairman of the board. So if you look at Form A in the appendix, talks about the response team. The chairman of the board is at the very top. And that's the authority to implement the plan. And then you have a coordinator and then the crisis management team. So the crisis management team is the one that actually goes forth and does all the work. Commissioners are involved just to make sure that we have the authority, that the county has the authority to move forward or the response team does. There is a coordinator to make sure everything is getting handled in the way that it should be. And that coordinator should be reporting to the commissioners regularly as to what's going on.
I was just thinking about media. So the Senate, the minute we have a crisis, you're going to have people discussing this. And I didn't see that on here. So I don't know if within that crisis management team, you need to put the public relations person. That's where I was looking for the commissioner input. On it was just the response to the community. And, because the ones that I see on here are going to be in motion within the offices, you know, getting things up and going. But you don't have that outside person to be communicating with the, with the community and/or media.
You know, we probably could add, under the coordinator position or responsibilities, to coordinate with the public relations person on, on community, community outreach.
I think kind of what I'm seeing, Pat, is there's an under C establishment of communications. There's the internal communication. And then there's the public. And I think the internal communication stuff is handled pretty well. But as far as letting the press know, McKenzie, I think about anybody could do that. But most of the time, these are going to be without warning.
They are. We can add, we can add that to the, I'll just add a bullet under the coordinator's responsibility. That would include reaching out to public relations.
Well, you could even extend bullet number two, communication with staff and public.
Yeah.
Maybe or something like that.
Yep, that would work too.
Biggest thing that I see in all this is it's communication.
I just don't know. So the coordinator is your HR person in clerk's office, right? Doug, would you, would you want to be the one to reach out? Or would you want your team to have another person that's automatically doing that? In the event of a, because I can just see your office being so inundated trying to.
So the clerk is a backup.
So HR is a, you think, you think that about that, the HR person is going to be managing multiple things, trying to talk to employees. That's not a good resource to have your outside communication going on, in my opinion. I have feedback.
So the, the, take out the person in that role. The coordinator, they are responsible for just making sure that everything is getting done. So to me, because they are the point person for all of this, whether it be the clerk's office, the sheriff's office, or whatever, that person's going to know all the workings of what's going on. And so they are a good person to coordinate with public relations. That's what I'm thinking.
Just make, yeah, I think we just need to make sure that it's clear that there is that person that they're going to reach out to and discuss it. That they're not trying to do that on top of everything else. And the only thing, and I, I don't know that I really ever came to a good resolution, but should this building explode tomorrow, where does everybody show up the next day? Or do we not, is that too in-depth?
Yeah, if this building should blow up, let's say, let's say tonight, then there would be a communication through Code Red or through text messaging through the directors or elected officials telling their team, this has happened, stay where you're put until we figure out what we're going to do next. Because there's a 12-hour, a three-day, what is most important? That we have to get running right away. And so that's part of this plan is that they, we've decided that these functions need to be done immediately and these can wait. And so that would be up to whoever the manager, director, or whatever elected official is for that department to work with them.
And then what is the plan? I looked, I looked for training. And there's a annual training, annual, making sure it's up to date. And so I'm assuming that HR would be responsible for that since they're the coordinator. It's on their schedule to update this.
Yes.
But what is the training mechanism? How do we know that, so the building department has gotten their plan or created a plan? How do we know that that's training on a regular basis?
You know, that is a good question, but the, the training is right up here at the very top in Form G. And that is something that needs to be done regularly. So it'd be like a tabletop exercise or something where you'd work through it and that's what the testing is. So that would, that would, actually, if you're sitting down and do a tabletop, that would open up any holes for training that might be missed. And it's kind of like the evacuation plans. And I'm not sure we've done an evacuation forever. But, you know, when we pull the fire alarm, how does that go? You do the back, you know, afterwards, the, the debrief to figure out what went wrong and what needs to be communicated. And this should be part of that process as well. So that, I would say that if the HR director is the one that is, is holding this and the one that's responsible for it, then you as, as that person's managers would need to make sure that it's being done.
So that's the FEMA 546 training? Because there's a list of training that you're throwing.
Yeah.
For senior leadership.
Yeah, so this, this is an example, it came from the state, but there's no reason we couldn't use that too, so.
I'm kind of surprised we haven't sprinkled this part of the building.
It would melt. It's hardboard.
You know, just insurance reasons, yeah.
I don't know that it's probably all that easy. Okay, so I'm just, I'm just trying to take this, making sure that we have accountability moving forward.
Right.
So.
That's critical.
On the directors, you know, when we're, when we're talking to the directors for, upon their annual review, we could have this part of their annual review. That it's, you know, have you done this work? The elected officials, we don't control nor, you know, should we advise. So I don't know that there is a mechanism to make sure that, you know, that it's done. Doug, do you have any feedback on that or?
Well, under Form, Form G, there's a training, testing, and maintenance section.
But we're only responsible for the directors on down. We're not responsible for all the other employees of the county. And so it's.
The, the people that would need to be trained on this are those that are on the critical response team. So we need to make sure that they're together. I think from the other standpoint, and the thing that we really had concerns with as far as holes in the whole process is what are directors and elected officials doing to make sure that if there is an emergency that they could keep working or that they have what their critical issues are? Is it all electronic? Do they have anything in paper? If it's in paper, is it electronic or is it in a safe place? Because let's say the. Because let's say the elections equipment goes down and Doug has to do everything on paper. Does he have the paper somewhere in a safe somewhere where he could access it? And those were the, the things that really came up as a concern. You know, do, or is there cross-training and do people have policy or processes and procedures that have been documented so that they could be grabbed and taken to another site? So I can't manage that. Um, but that is, is a concern that we came up with and it's for everybody. It's not just the elected officials and the directors. Um, and so it might be something that you just ask, maybe during, uh, beginning of the, the, um, elected official and director reports. Hey, you know, we just did the COOP. We're concerned about, are you ready and do you have these things and what would it look like for you? So that might be something that you can do. Um, and are you ready? And so this document should be shared with, um, the elected officials and the directors as well. Make sure that they're ready should something happen. You know, this building would probably be the one that would be the most concerning. It's probably your greatest risk.
Yeah, and you know, I guess what I don't know is the fact that if this end burns down and we lose everything, where do we get that information back? Talking to Jeremy, we have off-site servers that store that information. So then the process is okay, then we're gonna move building department, P and Z up to the senior center and they're gonna be working out of there until we come up with a rebuild or a new facility or whatever. How do you get that information up there so that they have access to that?
And that would be through the internet. So as long as we have our servers, everything's up and running and we don't have a problem there. If there is a problem, they have to revert to the backups. And Jeremy knows that there needs to be redundancy there and that was another place that we found, you know, a hole that needed to be filled. Um, so those redundancies are very important. The other thing is, and this is where you can really affect a change with your directors, is if there is a lot of paper files in their area, how critical is that paper that you have in there? And would you need that paper to be able to get up and running again? Because if that building burns over the weekend and you don't, you can't get that paper because it's burned up with it, now what are you gonna do? So those are concerns that would come alongside this, this document. So it does, the one thing about going through this process is it does kind of reveal some holes that we could have. Um, but I, the biggest concern would be the, um, ability to get the computers up and running again.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And I just hate doing documents and putting them on a shelf and they're never looked at again and they're never reviewed.
Yeah.
And so therefore I'm trying to think about sustainability. How do you make it sustainable? And there's certain things that we should visit every year.
Yes.
And so how do you put them into a calendar, um, and make sure that those are revisited every year?
Absolutely, absolutely.
You have to have a team that keeps it awake, pays attention to.
Yeah, and somewhere it's, yes. And somewhere it needs to be on more than just the person that's responsible in their calendar, on somebody else's. Cause, you know, that was my responsibility. And yeah, I passed it on to Mike, but he's been up to his eyeballs in alligators. So, um, you know, it's, it's something that is not on his radar. So do you have like a commissioner's calendar where you could make it a perpetual to make sure this is reviewed every year?
You know, I don't have it on mine.
Yeah.
It's just whether.
Exactly.
My, well, you know, when I'm gone, how does mine stay?
Exactly, exactly. And that's what a lot of this whole document, um, you know, like we had, um, Scott Klingon is one of the contacts. Well, Scott's gonna retire, so there're gonna be who's gonna, yeah.
Well, like we take a name off and it's the position.
It should be a position. So they should have a, um, facilities at there. So anybody that has a name, it should be a department. Um, so I mean, Mike had his in there, but at the bottom it also has HR at, so they have both of them.
And I'm kind of assuming here, but HR is gonna be responsible every year to update the contact list. Those are the numbers, this is the email address, this is.
Again, that would be part of the annual checking it.
And I think as soon as we get this first one done, completed, it should be fairly easy to accomplish that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
I think it's the training that's more, you know, front and center is, you know, do we just need to, how do we roll this out? How is the best way to roll this out? And it's almost like, you know, at four o'clock someday or four-thirty, we gather as many people in this room as we can and have that discussion.
I think rolling it out needs to be at the elected official and director level first.
Yeah.
And then it's really up to them to share if they want to share with their, their people. But they're really the ones that are gonna be responsible for making sure that Doug would be needing to be responsible for making sure that recording could be done in a certain period of time.
I guess I'm a little confused because before Commissioner Mopin asked a good question about, you know, who's gonna be in charge. But it's my understanding that commissioners are gonna have to implement the co-op plan, right? And then we're gonna follow. So it, it's gonna be, the elected officials and directors are gonna be looking to the commissioners implementing the plan. And then what, my understanding, it's gonna be our responsibility that our day-to-day operations are set up based on the, the workings of this plan, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. Cause we have the.
That would be my response, Commissioner Mopin, is that the commissioners ultimately would be, hey, we have an emergency situation, we're implementing the co-op plan, we need you to follow us. Uh.
Well, it's kinda like standing up the ELC. I mean, when one makes that decision that there's an emergency, you stand it up. So announce with a call to the chairman.
Exactly.
So when something's identified, there's gonna be a call to the chairman and the commissioners to, you know, say, hey, we need to do this. We'll just pull the trigger.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I guess more than, I, what I am concerned about is it's just so easy to pay money for plans. And I mean, the waterways plan right now, I'm concerned about, you know, how do we keep it up to date? And so this kind of stuff, I mean, it's really critical.
Yes.
Our all-hazard mitigation plan and the other plan that we had for emergencies within the county, always ten years out of date. So it really didn't speak to the current. And so I'm just trying to figure out, um, the turnover at every level, you know, who, who is that person? And I think at this moment in time, it's gotta be HR.
Yeah.
Because that's, they impact everybody in the county. Cause we will have to make sure that, yes, the tools and the resources needed. And it's almost like there's something in a budget for an annual workshop with the emergency team to make sure that everything is up and, you know, working and in place and updated. Just so that there's that, I mean, I can tell you five years has gone by really fast. We're still trying, we're updating the strategic plan every quarter, but still, it's because somebody's in charge of it and taking that and, and keeping it vibrant.
I think, yeah, it's a valid point and it's always my concern. Um, you know, when we put the emergency evacuation plan in place, you know, making sure that that stays up to date. Um, and it was up to date until I saw it for this thing and realized that I was still on it. So, you know, it is things like that and that is a concern. Um, that we make sure that somebody's in charge of making sure it's done. Um, and then the accountability is with you as, as the board that, you know, as part of the ongoing coaching or whatever, the review that you sit down and say, okay, when was the last time you looked at this? Has been updated. And I would say that it needs to be both the cope, the co-op, whatever you wanna call it, the continuity of business plan and the emergency evacuation plan, both of those need to be updated regularly.
And that would assume probably near the first of the year.
Whenever it works.
Cause you have all new people coming on the first year, new elections.
Yeah.
All that. Do you know, did we put it in HR job description for this? Is that something we need to add to that?
Well, it's part of the, uh, part of the risk management piece.
Okay.
Um, both the, I mean, I always looked at the emergency evacuation plan and, and this that I had started. It's always part of that risk management because as a risk manager, you're there to mitigate risk. And this is a way to mitigate risk. So I, I haven't looked at the job description in a while, but to me, that would be part of the global mitigation of risk. But it, you know, maybe you put in the job description that, um, ensures the business continuity plan and the emergency evacuation plan are reviewed every year. And so that would be part of updating that job description.
That works.
And that's kind of what we do with all hazard mitigation. It was really go through it and just update the contact information. Same thing with the emergency operation plan, just update who are we gonna call if it's Forest Service or State or whatever.
Exactly.
And that should be done at the beginning of each year.
Yep, yeah.
January, February, sometime soon in that year because of people. So I think if we approve this today and then give it to Mike to give, get it all filled in, who's the contact information, all that stuff, then we should be ready to go. And then I think what we need to do is print up some copies or electronic whatever and share it with all the elected officials, all the department heads. So if they're thinking about, okay, what would happen if my office burned down?
Yes, 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 yes.
How do I do this?
And then, uh, Sherry, you could also send the typo issues to Mike as well.
Okay, oh, I'll do that.
Yeah, at a probably better place.
Okay.
Cause I think I'm done at this point.
Okay. Um, well, and so back in my banking days, we always had to carry a copy of the telephone tree so that we have people's contact information and basic information. And then toward the end, when I was there, we actually had a, what do you do in the event of emergencies? And so we had to carry it all in our jockey boxes, making sure that it was readily available to us. So the next day, you know, if we needed it, we had the information that we needed.
And I think that's a really good idea. I could see it as a file in your computer or on your phone or whatever that you always have handy, but people lose their phones all the time.
The, the one thing I did observe, um, when I was here is that many of the elected officials and directors would have their employee contacts in their actual phone. Cause they would text for, you know, I'm sick today kind of thing. Or especially in the road department, I need to get ahold of somebody. So then they would be able to text them. But, you know, that, that would be up to whatever process you all came up with. Uh, the county pays for either a phone or someone to use their own phone. So it seems to me like it'd be reasonable to expect them to put their employees' information in there. So.
Pat, you know, cause I've never dealt with them, a cell on wheels, a cow. If we were to go to Ziply, say, we need internet somewhere for a cow, how much does that, does it cost?
I have no idea, that's Jeremy's question.
I just, my little brain running around. I wonder if we should have one on standby in case we do, but it sounds like it's almost like a Ziply function and.
I don't know, I mean.
You ever seen a cow before?
No. But I would think alls we gotta do is call and say, we need emergency services and they'd be here in a nanosecond.
Yeah, yeah.
Right in the back of a pickup.
Right.
My guess.
Right. Yeah, Ziply, um, one of the, the schedules that you'll have is what happens and where would we get backup communications? Um, you know, should something happen and Jeremy filled that whole thing out, so.
And that's, must be what I'm reading now.
Yeah.
Talks about all the different Hughes Net.
Yes, yes.
Oaklight, Starlink.
Verizon went down, could go to T-Mobile. And their service is good up here.
Okay, so I think this is a lot of work.
Thank you so much.
And, yeah.
For your support and working with all of this and getting it put together, so.
So we are gonna need a motion to approve the continuity plan.
Chairman, I would move that we approve the business continuity plan for Valley County.
Second, and a motion second to approve the continuity plan for Valley County. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Great enthusiasm, yay.
For a lot of work. Are you ready to come back?
Although sometimes.
She looks rested.
Yeah, that he looks, yeah. It's like she's, uh.
Well, I think that I'm healthier when I'm up here.
You are healthy when you're up here, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the smoke is thinner up here.
The smoke is thinner, air is fresher and, um, I don't wanna say it, but I, I'll get away from there. I have migraines and.
Oh, I'm good, I'm good, I can do shit.
Oh, you're kidding.
Do you still have your law in leisure time?
I do. So, um, it's, it's been kinda rough at times. And so I'm thinking, oh, I maybe I should go back to going back and forth more. So, cause I was healthier when I was here more often.
Interesting.
It really is.
Maybe it's a sagebrush or something down there.
Well, there's sagebrush up here. I did find that I am very allergic to sagebrush.
Well, yeah, a lot of people are.
Yeah, but, um, I, I think it's more the smog and all the pollen and all the trees and stuff.
Anaboyzy?
If it wasn't for the winters, I'd probably consider moving up here. Except I can't, Craig still has another year.
We had a lot of rain in January.
Well, this year, you know, I looked at this year and I thought, well, I could've worked another year and the winter wouldn't have bothered me a bit, but boy, the year before that. I am done.
Well, thanks again, Pat, for all your hard work on this.
Oh, not a problem. And, you know, if you need anything else, any projects, you know, reach out, I'm happy.
Okay.
Let me have some training that we need done.
So our next agenda is not until.